Okay, we have a long agenda, so let's get started. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call?
Councilman Duper.
Present. Present.
Councilman Daley.
Present.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
Mayor for temporary pescuums absent, there is a quorum.
Okay, we'll proceed to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilman Brower.
If you'll please stand and join me for the invocation. To Father in Heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to get together and consider issues that are important for us as a community and a city. We ask for your guidance and your patience as we deliberate these issues, and thank you for guiding us on them, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. Now is the chance for those who want to speak on items not on the agenda to come up and have your say, you have three minutes. Please state your name at the podium.
I'm Dr. Sylvie Wellhausen, and I represent a little bit of an larger group. Could I have a little bit more than three minutes?
Three minutes each.
I just want to say that we have heard that the project on that vacant land on Mountain View and Barton Road was going to have possibly a McDonald's and a Denny's. And as concerned health citizen for the welfare of our community, we are opposing this destructions. And on the ground that Loma Linda is a blue zone, which in other words is like a microclimate in a storm of degrading, bad health in America. So we'd like to make sure we, you know, we don't contribute to poor health. First do no harm is the motto of every doctor and hopefully everybody. And that's what I mentioned, and we don't stand alone, a lot of patients are opposed to this. And we have to kind of, as Loma Linda's a medical community, we have to kind of lead by example. And imagine the bad press we would be getting by building fast food chains in this community. And the menus of McDonald's and Denny's both are extremely rich in calories, very poor in phytonutrients. And these don't contribute to more disease in this community, and will probably lose our status as a blue zone, and that would be unfortunate. So I hope it doesn't happen on your block. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Marquez, I'm a lactation consultant here in the Inland Empire. And I'm also here in regards to the McDonald's that has been brought to the area. The basis of my practice is best for moms and best for babies. I had hoped that Loma Linda would also practice in that way, what is best for moms, babies, and the general community. And I hope that another fast food chain is not brought to the area. I was very proud to see Loma Linda on the Oprah Winfrey Show, and I would hate to see an update saying that you are no longer a blue zone. So please, stand up for the Inland Empire, help us remain the healthiest zone in, you know, all of Northern America, and stand up for my children, please. Thank you.
Ask a question?
Uh, I guess you can.
This is not the agenda, this proposal, so is there anything to discuss? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Come on up.
My name is Dr. Olivia Moses, and I'm also an employee at Loma Linda, I'm in charge of the wellness, the employee wellness program there. And I am, I come here today to ask that we not build a McDonald's or a Denny's on this corner of Mountain View and Barton. It just sends, I think, conflicting messages to our communities about what Loma Linda stands for and what we are trying to promote, not only as a medical center and university, but also as a city and a community. I also am coming to you today as a citizen of Loma Linda and who lives here pretty much down the street from that location. And to have a Denny's that is going to be open probably really late at night and 24 hours a day. The kind of probably customers that come in at that time, they're probably not necessarily the community we want to bring in to Loma Linda during those hours as well. So not only for health and for promoting something that we believe in, and that is actually true to every one of us as human beings, is health and wellness, but also to the safety of the community surrounding that area. Thank you.
Elijah Marquez Carter. I want the, I want McDonald's to not come to the blue zone because that's the only blue zone in the United States of America. And if McDonald's come into the blue zone, we won't have a blue zone anymore.
That's a hard act to follow, is there anyone who'd like to try? Come on up.
Clementina Castro, I am a psychiatrist from Spain. Thank you. My name is Clementina Castro, I am a doctor psychiatrist from Spain, and I am here doing research in Loma Linda. And I received this message today from Dr. Dos Santos, from the public health, telling me about this meeting. And this is my first time here, and I'm very honored to be with you here. And I have a distinct proposal, an alternative to this, if we can do this. I know Wendy's from my adolescence time, when I was living in Puerto Rico. And I ate good foods from Wendy's. And, and I am a vegetarian, I don't eat meat at this time, time ago. But I believe if we can have both parts happy, and we can deal with both parts, we'll be a, well, you need to, I'm sorry, my language is Spanish, but not for that is less value or reach. Then you need to get a little patient to understand me also, in my language, trying to speak in your language. Anyway, I believe if we can have both parts, for example, if we can deal with Denny's and McDonald's and talk with them in a big dialogue, and say, okay, you are coming to a blue zone that people are so attached to this lifestyle, as you heard and we know. And why don't we go and have Denny's and McDonald's here for more opportunity to the city and the surrounding areas? And go with no meat McDonald's and Denny's and follow lifestyle here in Loma Linda with fruits, vegetables, and other type of juice, fruit juices, and sweet potato, potatoes, and all of those things that are good for health and benefit us. And I believe those restaurants will be benefit, and we will be benefit with in so many other aspects. Just think about, thank you.
Go ahead. I think you have about forty-five seconds left.
Trying to have McDonald's improve their menu with changing or tweaking their menu is like trying to put five milligrams of vitamin C in a cigarette. It's still a cigarette, meaning they are not going to completely change their menu. Right now their campaign is Chicken McNuggets, and you see all the billboards everywhere, not only Chicken McNuggets, giant Chicken McNuggets. So I, we're all hopeful that McDonald's could become this organic salad bar place, but I doubt it, so I'm just giving my doubts, thank you very much.
Anyone else? One more?
Hi, my name is Jeanette Lewis, and I come to you as a citizen of Loma Linda for many years, and also as a property owner. I own several properties in Loma Linda. And I would hate to see the value of our homes. South of Barton has always been known, ever since I was young, as an area that did not allow businesses. It was a major ordeal for Carl's Jr. to be put into Loma Linda. And I just don't think that this is the direction that the community would like to see the city to go. Yes, I understand the need for additional revenues for the city of Loma Linda, but I don't know that that location would be desirable to all the folks that live in the townhomes behind, and in the community just off of Barton area. So I would be concerned for safety reasons and also the value of our properties. Not to mention, just to reiterate what the others have said, that this community is known for its health values. And I definitely believe that this sends a completely opposite message to those that know us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yeah, some of you may wonder why we're stone-faced up here, when there's something not on the agenda, we're not allowed to do much discussion about it or to act on it. And it's not, it's not something that's up for consideration by the city council at this time, it would go to the planning commission first. And I believe it's on, it's on the agenda for the planning commission tomorrow night, so you could have a more direct impact with them, but we'll remember what you've said, and I'm sure we'll hear it again if it comes.
What time does the planning commission start, for everyone's information?
Seven o'clock tomorrow night, same place.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got some other exciting agenda items, you can stay for another three hours if you like. Oh, it's, it's, if we get done in an hour, I'll get a prize. So, you're welcome to, to leave if you're bored by civic stuff.
Actually, actually what's, what's interesting is there's probably another agenda item that most of you would be interested in that's on tonight. That's the Medical Marijuana Co-ops.
You, you, if you want to, you can stay because that item is coming up on the agenda. Yeah, it's on the agenda tonight, just, uh, very soon. I would say within the next ten minutes. Okay.
I just figured that's probably in line with the same theme.
It's a vegetable product.
Is it organic?
Not sure. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to make a statement? About the non-agenda item, or? Then you'll have to, that's later, that's in a few minutes. Okay. So that ends the public comment, we'll deal with conflict of interest when, when it arises. I believe there'll be an issue on item thirteen because our three designated council members are not here. So we'll just have the city attorney decide whether we'll put this item off or draw straws again. Thirteen.
I would recommend that we hold that over to the next meeting.
Okay, then, so be it. Then we'll move to item number one. A presentation to George Pendrid, who's served for quite a while on our city budget committee. Does anyone know how long he's been on that committee, probably since it formed? Well, why don't I just read the plaque? Sixteen years. The plaque reads, "George F. Pendrid, in recognition of community service budget committee, nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and eleven." He couldn't be here tonight, he's ill, but we just wanted to mention him and his long and distinguished service, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. Item number two, we have a public hearing on regional urban water management plan. San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District has a presentation.
I have Ms. Clement with engineer with Kennedy Jank, consultant, she's here, she did the, this, this study for Municipal Water District, which we are a partner in this study.
Get the mic as close to you.
Is that better, everybody?
That's better.
Okay, so, um, give it a second, but I'll get started because I know you have a tight agenda today. My name's Meredith Clement, I'm with Kennedy Jank's consultants, and along with several of many agencies within the San Bernardino Valley area, Loma Linda chose to prepare a regional urban water management plan. The eight agencies participating are the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, if you guys are familiar with them, they are the wholesaler for the San Bernardino Valley area. East Valley Water District, City of Redlands, San Bernardino Water Department, West Valley Water District, Ukiah Valley Water District, and the City of Colton. We structured this plan in a manner where we put all the kind of regional information, things that are common to all the agencies, the upfront, and then each agency got their own chapter behind it. The reason being is we felt like there was no reason for eight different agencies to write the same chapter over and over and over. So we were trying to make this a cost-effective plan, rather than having eight meetings, eight kickoff meetings, eight meetings on how to do projections, eight meetings on how to comply with water conservation. The cities and different water utilities decided they would do a group plan, so it ended up being very cost-effective. It improved coordination between the agencies as a part of the Urban Water Management Plan Act, this is what the document was written for, to comply with that. You're encouraged to participate, to coordinate with other agencies that use a common water source, and who are your neighbors and things like that. So, so we got some cost-effectiveness by doing a regional plan, improved coordination, and also it just adds to the spirit of cooperation, which the water agencies in this valley have a very long history of doing. I'm just going to give a quick example of the long history of that. It started out with the water rights application in nineteen ninety-one, which kind of kicked off a lot of groundwater modeling with the United States Geological Survey. Then a master plan put together to identify major facilities that were needed to recharge groundwater in this area. And then the Upper Santa Ana Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, which started the formal groundwater management plan for the basin. In addition to, if you're familiar, there's an adjudication in this area. The Basin Technical Advisory Committee, this is the committee that meets and determines that kind of annual goals, objectives for the San Bernardino Basin area. And then right now, we're kind of at our final, not the final, another step in this process, a regional urban water management plan. And Valley District was going to be here tonight, unfortunately, a little conflict of interest, so they did want to come speak to you about this regional process, and thank them for their participation in it. So the quick requirements of an urban water management plan are, it applies to any water utility that delivers three thousand acre feet or serves three thousand persons. So Loma Linda clearly falls in that category. The main focus is to identify gaps between your anticipated demands and your anticipated supply, so you don't find yourself there with a gap, you want to know in advance. And we look at a twenty-year period, so we, well, the act requires you look at a twenty-year period, we actually looked at a twenty-five year period, so we went up to twenty thirty-five. And the purpose for doing that is if Loma Linda wanted to apply for a grant, sometimes they require a twenty-year period, so if you were to apply in twenty fourteen, this plan would still be applicable to, for your needs. And then we have to also look at demands and supplies in different kind of hydrologic year types, so your average year, your single dry year, which is typically your driest, driest period in your hydrologic record. And then your multiple dry year period, which is typically your, a repeat of your three driest years on record. So other major contents, we have to kind of look at all the water supply sources, for Loma Linda, the major one is of course the San Bernardino Basin area, and also a minor amount of Santa Ana water that you get from stock ownership in Bear Valley Mutual Water Company. You also have to look at any water quality problems that may arise that could impair your ability to use your water source. You have to look at water conservation, you have to look at water shortage contingency planning, and that being like, let's say you had a power outage, or an earthquake, or something went terribly wrong, and you were on a, you had a, your supply got cut back twenty, thirty, up to fifty percent, how would you handle such a situation? So, under the Urban Water Management Plan Act, you're supposed to prepare this plan every five years, in years ending zero and five, and you'll notice this is not a year ending in zero, five. The reason we're updating it in twenty eleven is there were substantial legislative changes to the Urban Water Management Plan Act that extended the deadline to July first, twenty eleven. So that's why we're a little bit off in our years. So the major legislative change I'm referring to is this new law called Senate Bill seven, that's special extended session seven, also known twenty percent by twenty twenty. The goal of this is to reduce urban water use in California to twenty percent by year twenty twenty. It was an executive order under Governor Schwarzenegger. So this new law requires all people falling under the Urban Water Management Plan Act, all utilities, to calculate their base gross, excuse me, their base gross water use in gallons per capita per day. So basically, how much does each person in your city use, but not just persons, like, they take on some of the, like, some of the hospital use, some of the, just, if you look at all your water use divided by all your people, what do you come up with? And you then have to calculate a reduction target by year twenty twenty. And there's four methodologies for doing that, we'll go over that real fast. And then agencies must hold a public hearing to go over how targets will be met, and this meeting will count for that purposes. So just a quick look at your water supplies. As I mentioned, the major supply for you is groundwater from the San Bernardino Basin area, and a minor amount from the Santa Ana River through stock ownership of Bear Valley Mutual Water Company. And then your projected demands, there's, this is kind of, you know, the future is never twenty twenty, but you take, we took projections from the Southern California Association of Governments, and we applied them to your service area, to come up with an idea of what your potential future water demands will look like through year twenty thirty-five. So you'll go up, not a lot, between twenty fifteen and twenty thirty-five, but a decent amount of growth. So I, this is something we're required to go over to meet the provisions of Senate Bill seven, X seven. You had the option to use four methods for calculating your target, and the one that was chosen for Loma Linda, we thought most advantageous, was to take eighty percent of the existing base daily per capita water use. So we're going to try to take the current gallons per capita per day and bring it down to eighty percent of that by year twenty twenty. So I'll tell you what that is, your current baseline water use is two hundred and fifty-five gallons per capita per day, that's actually very, very middle of the road for this area. We're seeing from like two hundred and thirty to about three hundred for the Inland Empire. So you guys are not the highest, you're not the lowest. Your interim water use target will be two hundred and thirty gallons per capita today, and so that's, that's what you're shooting for to achieve by year twenty fifteen. And your compliance water use target will be two hundred and four gallons per capita per day. So that means you'll need to reduce, you either need to bring in a lot of people that use hardly any water, or you have to, you can just reduce water use across all your sectors, by nine to ten percent by year twenty fifteen, and nineteen to twenty percent by year twenty twenty. The methods that Loma Linda, we've talked about Loma Linda could use to achieve these targets are continuing the existing conservation programs that the city already has, a conservation coordinator, water waste prevention ordinance, improving the audit system that they, and improving any leaks in the distribution system, public information programs, school education programs. And then something coming up, it's kind of already in effect, but we haven't seen the full impact of it yet, is they call it the water sense specification for new development. This one, this law went into effect January one, two thousand and nine, and it requires that new home development be twenty percent more water efficient than old home development. So you won't really see the impact of that until development kind of maybe starts again. And then a near-term plan is to maybe look at institutional water uses and means to make them more water efficient. And then also working with the eight regional agencies that were participants in this plan to come up with the cost-effective means to offer water rebates. We think that could be done more cost-effectively as a group than each city and agency trying to do their own. So that would be things like high-efficiency clothes washer rebates, and that's not just for residential, it could be for commercial, you can see a lot of benefit to offering commercial rebates. Water sense specification toilets and incentives to reduce landscape water use. But, so, some water savings could be achieved through requirements placed on new development, but it will be necessary for Loma Linda to increase its water conservation programs to bring that gallons per capita per day down. Using what we know as the California Urban Water Conservation Council methodology, and they're just one group that kind of has calculators for water savings versus cost of doing so. We think to bring your demand down twenty percent by year twenty twenty could cost an additional twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the city. Hopefully, I, I think the intent is to look at water use every year when you file with the Department of Health, your public water system statistics, to see if you're trending towards your goals, the gallons per capita per day, and then decide if you need to ramp up conservation or not. So I'm just going to give you a quick and positive view of your water supplies. In a normal year, you're, you look good, you have plenty of water to meet your demands, all the way out into year twenty thirty-five. You also have a pretty positive outlook in a single dry year, which tends to be the hardest to meet supplies and demand in. And then also, you're looking And then, also, you're looking good in a multiple dry year, so. And I'm just trying to go fast, but I'd be happy to take any questions. Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we did a lot of work on the sound system the last couple of weeks, and we're still working out the bugs. Can you really lean into that mic?
How's that?
Yeah, much better.
That better? Okay. I feel like I'm really close to it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of comments and questions. Section 8.4-1, there's a University of Loma Linda, I believe that should be Loma Linda University.
Okay.
Um, just the comment you mentioned, I think a lot of people surprise that, you know, literally 80% of our water supplies come from the ground and surface. I find that pretty amazing. Most people, I don't think, would appreciate that. Two questions. There's this table ES-1 with the conservation strategies planned, and there's different, you know, headings on different things. I notice, City of Loma Linda, there's nothing marked for residential audits, landscape water surveys, again, table ES-1. Is that something you feel we need?
Well, we did this analysis, we found, and I could pull the exact numbers for you. To do it, it could be beneficial to you if you targeted high water use homes. If you follow this strict methodology that the California Urban Water Conservation Council offers, it requires you do like 1.5% of all homes, in which case you may be getting less economy from that. Do you see what I'm saying? You may be getting a mix of high water users and efficient water users. So, I think if you were to target your audits to people who are on the high end of their water use, you could see a good use of your staff time or any consultants you use for that. But if you are just trying to go out and get 1.5%, you may not be hitting those high water users, and you might, you won't see as much savings as you would if you targeted it carefully. But when we did the cost-benefit analysis, we found that it was not, if you did it at the levels required in the, by the California Water Council, Conservation Council, it would not be cost-benefit effective. But if you were to do it at some lesser level targeted, it could be beneficial.
Okay. Excuse me, my voice here. The other question I had, what happens if we don't meet the 20% requirement to reduce our water usage? Is there a penalty, or are there other enforcement measures?
No one comes and takes you out to jail, or me, or anybody else, but what happens is, you, you could lose your ability to apply for drought assistance in event of emergency. You could lose your ability to apply for any sort of water-related grant and/or loan, so you would be ineligible for state revolving fund loans, you'd be ineligible for any loans from the State Water Resource Control Board, the Department of Public Health, or the Department of Water Resources. Or the Regional Board, actually. So, any water-related agency would be unable to give you a grant and/or loan if you did not achieve those targets. And the other thing, and I would hope it would not come to this, but a citizen could sue you for failure to comply with the Act, like Sequel works, you know, it could be a citizen lawsuit, or a hostile water agency could sue you for inefficient water use and try to take your water allocation. I've only seen that happen once, but I don't know what 2020's going to look like.
Thank you.
Looking at the same table ES-1. And you briefly addressed it in your presentation, but where we talk about high-efficiency clothes washer rebates, water sense toilet rebates, commercial institutional industrial programs, landscape water use efficiency. Currently, those are not in effect in Loma Linda. Is my interpretation of this correct?
That would be correct, yes.
And what are the next steps to begin to proceed to implement some of those things?
The, and I'll, I'm not as close to this as probably Jarvis. The agencies that worked to prepare this urban water management plan have been meeting independently, I think two or three meetings at least, and they've brought in the Resource Conservation District for the inland empire to see if they could, if they could offer these programs in a cost-effective manner, if they went in as a group rather than each agency trying to do it. So I think the next step for that group is to, they're getting a proposal from the Resources Conservation District to, to see if it's going to be cost-effective, and if they would, if they could, as an umbrella agency administer for all eight. When we ran the cost-benefit analysis, it is not cost-effective for Loma Linda to do it on its own.
On its own.
You need to come up with a way to share the cost across multiple agencies to make it worthwhile.
And what would be the source of the funds for those?
Well, probably all eight agencies would pitch in together, and it might, and I, I'm sort of just talking off the cuff here, I don't know what the discussion is. It might be a proportion, like, a bigger city's pay more, bigger utilities. I would think there would be some sort of proportionality to the size of the benefit you will receive.
When we did the study with the cost analysis, it turned out that for the residential area, 80% of water uses for residential is really for irrigation.
That's correct, yeah. It's quite high.
High. So, we are talking towards doing a drought-resistant plant or artificial turf. We want to concentrate on that first before we go to the toilet or the dishwasher, a washing machine, that kind of.
I think the idea, yeah, is to use the things that you think will get the most bang for your buck with the least money. And then, if that's not getting, is that, and you see like in 2014, that's not going to be quite enough, start implementing things that are maybe not quite as cost-effective, but will still have water savings.
So these are on the agenda?
Yes.
To be part of the plan?
Yes.
And we'll get subsequent proposals in terms of how we may be able to implement this and what the
Yes, sir.
Fiscal impact would be.
Yes, sir, and I, I will be responsible. That's the hard part.
I want to compliment you on that. This was a little bit difficult for, to get through for somebody that doesn't know a lot about water, but I did learn that gallons per capita is kind of the benchmark, the golden benchmark.
It is, because it makes sense, because they don't want you to be penalized for growing, and so, but they do want to penalize you for growing inefficiently in terms of water.
And even though the, the current and long-term through 2025 view of this is that the supply of water at Loma Linda exceeds current and future demand.
Through 2035, yes.
2035, right. And so, as we conserve this water in the future, what happens to it? Do we sell it off to somebody else, or what happens to it?
I hate to say this, but the way the calculation works, and I'm not saying be a game player, but the way the calculation works, you could sell that water and it wouldn't count against your targets. I'm not saying that's how you should do it, but you could play that game if you were...
It would be a worthwhile thing to explore, I would think.
Yes, the way the calculation works, you subtract any water you put into long-term storage or sell to other agencies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And now, the appropriate motion is to adopt the Regional Urban Water Management Plan.
I'll move acceptance of the report.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll move on to the next item, G3. Public hearing on proposal to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries. This is the first reading, and we will set a second reading. Sometimes we have public hearings in the second reading, but this time, the public hearing is the first reading. So, we need a report from the city attorney first.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, before you this evening is a draft ordinance that would implement a policy of prohibiting within the city of Loma Linda the establishment or operation of a medical marijuana distribution facility. As you recall, we've had in place for the last two years a moratorium on the establishment of such facilities. During that period of time, we've watched the litigation in other cities that has gone forward regarding these types of facilities. And we've prepared the ordinance before you to take into account the results of that litigation in other cities. But I can report that consistently throughout the state, the courts have ruled that the cities do retain, within their general police power, the authority to regulate or prohibit these facilities as part of the zoning and land use police power that the cities have. Cities are not preempted by any state law from doing so. And that was specifically held by some of the recent cases. So, we are not way out in front on this. We are following authority not only from trial courts, but courts of appeal, and the California Supreme Court has declined to take up cases holding that the city does have this authority. And so, without interfering in any way with state law, or the rights that any individual might have under state law, under the Compassionate Use Act, or the Medical Marijuana Program Act, the city does have the authority to prohibit within the jurisdiction of Loma Linda the establishment of these marijuana distribution facilities. The ordinance addresses the zoning aspect, as well as the public nuisance aspect of such a facility. You'll note that we did not impose any criminal penalty for a violation of this ordinance, and that was because there was an issue in some cases over whether or not that would be appropriate, and so, in an abundance of caution, we limited the enforcement provisions to civil, administrative, and other legal remedies. I do have a revision of the ordinance that the city clerk was kind enough to copy for you. If I could distribute those tonight. They're very minor changes, though. The first change is on page two of the ordinance at the top. One of the wheres is, I just added an update to that information. There's a particular website that has a compilation of listing the cities and counties that have prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries, and so I just wanted to update that. Current total, according to this website, is, as of today, 152 cities and 13 counties that have adopted prohibitions. The other minor change was on page four, under section 9.24.030, violation penalty. This, as I had indicated, is where we exclude criminal enforcement, but since section B refers back up to section A, I thought we might add the phrase, which now reads, "that shall be subject to civil, administrative, and injunctive remedies as set forth in this code or as otherwise prohibited by law." So that was just a clarification that I thought was appropriate to add. I don't have anything further to add to the written report that's before you. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, this is scheduled for a public hearing. The recommendation is to approve on first reading, introduce, and set for second reading on June 28.
Okay, there, any questions? Remember, this will require a public hearing, so any motions will be taken after the public hearing. Are there any questions, technical questions?
Just a question, I'm curious. Do we have applicants, or is this just a preventive measure to keep them out of town?
I'm not aware of any current applicants. I know that some months ago, there were one or more inquiries regarding the city's position on marijuana dispensaries.
We've had two or three inquiries, we have no formal applicants at this time.
Okay, hearing no others, then we'll start with the public hearing. I have two requests. The first is Dick Wiley. Then we'll take...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to suggest to you a recommendation of an idea. If this does hold up, fine. If it doesn't in time, I would like to make a suggestion that basically would approve, or give you the option to approve, that it would be qualified under a medically certified doctor to operate these, and/or a certified pharmacist. If they get out of line, or something happens that I'm following rules, they lose their licenses, and they're not going to be willing to do that, probably to lose their license over something like this. If it's done properly, I'm not in favor of the marijuana, but if it is proven, because doctors have gone through schooling enough to know what you can prescribe for what. Some of the others don't. Fine, there it is. Now, if you run into complications, whose fault is it? It comes back to the distributor. So with this, I would suggest that something like this could possibly be added, to say if later on, courts overturn it, laws overturn it, that this is the out that you've got to be able to deal with, so that it does wind up as a quality place instead of just a open place. And to hopefully have you consider something like that, to be added to it, because as time goes on, we've seen things in the past, that laws are there, but we get ones that change the rules. And if they change the rules, we're stuck with something if we don't have it in an ordinance or rule codes.
The next speaker will be the young lady in the front row.
I do respect the gentleman's, the question, informations, and with that, an answer. I do have to say, I am firmly believe that what Loma Linda City and council members here stand for, the moratorium set up 2009, it actually was on paper Sunday, I mean, today's sun paper, was listed in the front page, by the way. I have read it thoroughly, and having the business on the corner of the Mountain View, and we have been in the health food business for over almost 40 years as a family-owned. I do proudly say, I'm not a resident of this city, but I love this city, and what you guys stand for, what Blue Zone is, what the most helpful people, and healthy people, is in this city right here. I do respect, again, what individuals write, but the medical marijuana is a gateway to drug, very first beginning, and this is, creates tremendous amount of other logistics and other issues. So I may say to all the gentlemen's here and ladies, do not approve, and stand firm what you believe, what you stand, and do not bring those medical marijuana dispensers. And I do believe there is more issues, more problems will arise in this city. For that reason, and I do just give you, all you gentlemen's here, to stand firm again to not bring that one in here. It's not going to create any more positive side of it. I do believe furthermore, it's a negative implications in this city. May people may not move into this city because of that, perhaps. And this issue exactly, I think, is connected with McDonald's coming in here, then it's coming into that corner. Perhaps you may recruit other businesses in throughout the inland empire to Southern California, bring good vegetarian restaurant. I must tell you, as a part of a business owner's family, we constantly do get asked, request, having good vegetarian restaurant. to bring good vegetarian restaurant here. So perhaps maybe that will be another, you know, the issue you can propose it and bring into this, I mean, Loma Linda City residents. Thank you.
Could we get your name for the record?
Lee Egan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next request is Lanny Swerdlof.
My name is Lanny Swerdlof. I'm a registered nurse, and I have spoken here a couple times before when you were considering the moratoriums. In your ordinance, well, first of all, I want to, I am the founder of the Inland Empire Patients' Health and Wellness Center. It's a medical marijuana collective in Riverside. It is the one that was referred to in your, in the preamble to your ordinance. It is the collective that is now the Fourth District Court of Appeals. We were sued by the, served a temporary restraining order by the city of Riverside. We went to a lower court. We lost in the lower court. We appealed to the Fourth District Court of Appeals. The Fourth District Court of Appeals is considering the case, and they have entered what is called a writ of supersedeus. That is, which permanently stays the injunction that we cannot be closed during the entire proceedings that are, that are going on right now. More importantly, when you issue a writ of supersedeus, the Fourth District Court will quite often issue an opinion, and they did in this case, and the opinion said that there is no case law on this issue, that they are going to decide the issue, whether cities can ban collectives under their zoning ordinance. There's no case law. So when this ordinance refers to the Cruz decision and this court records other decisions, the Fourth District Court says, no, those decisions do not apply to bans. So that is incorrect in your ordinance, and I think that's something you should change. You justify this, like so many other cities, that you have been stampeded into believing that there's going to be an increase in crime if a medical marijuana collective opens up. You hear this all the time, and you always cite, they always cite the chief, California Chief of Police White Paper as their justification for saying there's an increase in crime. Well, expecting an unbiased opinion on this issue from the California Chief of Police Association, expecting like an unbiased opinion on the nutritional content of a steak at Ruth's Chris Steakhouse by PETA, you're not going to get it. And what you need to do is take a look at some studies that look at this issue. Now, there's just Imperial Beach is considering a ban, just like yours, and they are justifying it because of an increase in crime, but one of the local media outlets there did a little study and found that there has been no increase in crime with the collectives that have been operating there. The Chief of Police Paper, by the way, is just a series of anecdotes, anecdotes. I'm sure there's some problems up at Loma Linda Hospital that would be anecdotal evidence, but doesn't mean there's problems with Loma Linda Hospital, just because there's some anecdotal things there. The Chief of Police, I believe, did a study, did a study on whether there is a crime increase around collectives, but they found out that there wasn't any, so they didn't release the study. They have the resources to do it. But there is a study out there that actually deals with this issue. It was done by the Denver City Police Department, and I'm going to distribute this study to This was a study done last year, commissioned by, it was done by members of the Denver Police Department. This is not, you know, this is the police. They're not exactly thrilled to death with medical marijuana, but they are ethical. They did the study, they compared a period of time between when there was no collectives in an area and when there was collectives in an area over a period of one or two years. And they compared the increase, what happened to the crime rate. Well, it turns out during this period of the study was done, that the rate of crime decreased overall in the city of Denver by 1 percent, went down by 1 percent. But in the 1,000-foot areas surrounding all the collectives, crime decreased by 3.1 percent, almost three times what it did throughout the city of Denver. So it would actually seem, if you want to go by studies, that your neighborhoods would be better off if they had a collective operating in them than if they don't. Your study, your ordinance refers to an increase in crime. You have no statistics other than anecdotal evidence from the Chief of Police Association. I have statistics here done by the Denver City Police. So that's another part that I think you should remove for the ordinance, the justification that you want to do this because there's an increase in crime. You know, you don't like medical marijuana. I think that's what it's all about. You think it's a fraud or whatever. I have no concept. Then just do it, but don't try to justify doing it on false statements. Oh, I would like to thank you, though, for recognizing that there's no criminal penalties. That's, that's, that's the way it should be done. This is a, this is a zoning issue. Nobody is doing anything wrong. All these collectives are, if they're operating properly, are following state law and the AG guidelines. So there's nothing criminal going on here. It's a disagreement, you know, businesses have disagreement with you every now and then over zoning issues, and these collectives are having a disagreement over a zoning issue. This is not criminal. I would like to thank you for recognizing that, that this is not a criminal issue, and this is strictly a civil issue, a disagreement over a zoning issue. Thank you.
I think there's some questions.
If I understand your statement, you're, you're not speaking in opposition to the ordinance or the proposal. You're speaking in opposition to the implication that there will be an increase in crime. Should we approve medical marijuana?
I, I'm speaking in opposition to the, to the ordinance. However, expecting, you know, you people have made up your mind already. If George Washington was here, who grew hemp, by the way, and separated the male from the female plants, and why else would you do that? I don't think he could change your mind. So I'm not, I don't expect to change your mind. You're going to vote this ban into place. But I'm just hoping you might have the intestinal fortitude to recognize there's some errors in this ordinance, and you'll clean it up before you pass it.
I resist the implication that we've made our minds up.
Well, we'll see, won't we?
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments. I think it's easy to mix up a number of issues on this. I think this is clearly a zoning issue. This is related to what we feel the vision of our city should become and how we enact that vision. This is not a more, a discussion on the merits or lack thereof as far as, you know, legalizing marijuana. I think there are some very positive arguments that this country should legalize marijuana, and the lessons that we learned with prohibition may apply, but that is not what's before us tonight. It's what we feel is best for the community, based on the input we get from citizens, and that is strictly the issue. And I think it's important to keep, keep that clearly in front of us, and until all the ambiguities and the dissonant positions of federal law and state law are cleared up, I support going ahead with this ordinance.
Mr. Swerdlof, you weren't here earlier when the, the amount of public concern about a hamburger joint was, was quite extreme. So this is a different town from some of the other places that you've been, and I'm sure you're aware of that. But this is a place that cherishes its health consciousness, and I've heard your presentations in the past that marijuana use is, promotes health. I'm sure there are advocates of that position. I, as a physician, agree with Councilman Brower that there are medical indications for marijuana and cannabinoids. But to my dismay, the medical marijuana law has resulted in a lot of physicians prescribing it for very small indications, such as social anxiety, or nervousness, or strange things like that. I anticipated that when the law was passed, it would be for the, the classic indications of nausea and chemotherapy relief, and even some other indications, such as those suffering from diseases of the elderly, of elderliness. But it's turned into, in some places, an excuse for those who want to use it for more recreational purposes, to have a prescription and thus legalize it. I think if we wanted to legalize it completely, it would not be done under a medical excuse. I think most of the use that's occurring now, and I don't have any statistics, so I admit that, most of the use is for more or less recreational purposes. It's under the medical marijuana dispensaries. And I think that's unfortunate, and as a result, I would support the, the ban as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since you kind of opened the door, I will, I will weigh in with a little of my experience. I believe you're absolutely correct, and I respect your position as a physician in stating what you said, because I do believe it is overused, and there are some unscrupulous physicians out there that give away these cards. My concern is not for a legitimate user, but again, for, in my 15 years of law enforcement, law enforcement experience, the recreational users who very quickly pull out the card to tell you how many problems they have and what, why it's been described or prescribed to them. And I would tend to agree with you. These are not cancer survivors. They're not terminally ill people. They tend to be people that have skirted the system and have been a draw on the public resources for many years, and have now just found another way to legalize their recreational use. That is my experience. My concern also is those type of people coming into this town, traversing our streets back and forth, in and out, and what other issues they may get into, not necessarily visiting a potential co-op, but while they spend time in our city. I would, I would like to see this whole medical marijuana issue taken up by the state with tighter controls, and I don't think that's going to happen right now. But I respect your opinion, sir, and, and your, the information you bring forward, but again, not everybody is, is as up, up and up. And it would hard, it would be hard to argue that the way your facility does business is the way another facility would do business here. So I think there is some direction from our citizens on what they would like to see. Again, you've seen that, I've, I've received a bunch of emails over the McDonald's thing just in the last two days. My inbox is full. I can only imagine that there would be an even bigger outcry for something like this. So I think it is a direction that we are obligated to go by, by just the nature of our citizens here.
Okay, would anyone like to set in motion?
I will move Council Bill O. 2011-07 with the clarifications and language that the city attorney mentioned in addition to our original report.
Including that this is the first reading and setting a second reading for June 28?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
And I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, then that passes. The second reading will be in two weeks. We'll move now to item number four, public hearing, the second reading. And I can't anticipate a whole lot of opposition to this one, but establishing a higher speed limit on the Mountain View Bridge.
I do, this is 40-35, but I don't know everybody's choice.
It's, yes. This, just as some background, this is, this is a bridge that in the past was narrow. It had a little bit of a log jam there. The speed limit is five miles per hour less than that, which is present north and south of it. And now that it has four lanes and good sight lines, we feel it's, at least on the first reading, we felt it was reasonable to increase the speed limit to 40 from 35. Is there anything in, in addition? So I took your report, sorry about that. Okay, is there any discussion by you guys before we do the public hearing? Okay, then we'll have a public hearing. Anyone who wants to praise us for this? Hearing none. Public hearing. Oh, I forgot, you had a, you had a request, so please come forward, Mr. Wiley.
Thanks, sir. My observations, when I go from here to my place, I will do 35 going up hill. I get passed. The problem I've got to get on the other side, it's 40. But once you go over the top and you go down, you become 45 or 50. Now, that doesn't mean we stop or slow down. We generally continue. If we bring it to 45, next thing you know, we're going to have 50, 55. Speed limit's 55. Now, you're putting more traffic signals in. At peak times, they back up. The possibility for accidents is going to go up. Now, yes, it's wider. I don't have a problem with that, but when I see people around here, even when I go and bargain, they'll come flying down there. What's the speed limit? 45 through town, 50, 55 on the outside. You do the same thing on a freeway. Rules are rules. They're for you, but they're not for me. And it's something that I can see we will increase. If it's enforced and people go back to 40, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't see it being enforced. I can tell you, going up Mission to California, there's a heck of a lot of rollarounds coming out of these streets. Nobody's coming, but on the corner, there are stop signs. Well, that's for you. That's not for me. So this is where I say, I get a little agitated when I see things increased because that's the flow, but it's the other side that I'm worried about. You can have 40, but you've got a lot of cross-traffic going from Clark's to State of Brothers, and sometimes they'll pull out real quick while I try to get over. So I'm trying to prevent some accidents, and some of them can be serious.
Well, my understanding from, from our lieutenant is that the enforcement of the 35 speed limit on the bridge has been difficult because it's interpreted by some judges as a speed trap.
Yeah, where's the breaking point?
Because it's 40, 35, 40, and there's a natural tendency for people going downhill to coast, and they pick up a little bit of speed, and they have a really hard time enforcing it. So I think enforcement actions will be easier if there's consistent speed limit across the bridge. So from that perspective, I think it's a good move.
I mean, as long as we can keep it on the, on the north side.
Well, that's what enforcement is about. So, you know, I don't know what their threshold is when they do it, but they're probably going by the traffic flow and those who exceed the pattern are probably...
But that takes time and effort out of the city for other enforcement.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Now, the appropriate motion, we, we probably should have a script up here for these second Title only, second reading, roll call.
The motion, the motion would be to waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. I would read it by title only, and you would adopt on roll call vote.
Is there that motion?
I move what Pam said.
And I'll second what Pam said.
Okay, is there any other discussion about it? Now, do we vote on this, or?
I can't help but make one comment, sorry. I, I just don't understand the logic of state law with these 85 percentile surveys. You know, I know it's a law, it makes sense, we need to make it consistent, but, you know, I could foresee 30 years from now, seems like every five, 10 years, traffic speed moves up 5, 10 miles an hour on any road. Maybe by the year 2040, we'll have an 80 mile an hour speed limit on this road. It just...
We might be flying by then.
Stan, I look at it the other way around. This is the one chance for all of you slow pokes. All you have to do is round up 14 percent of the people, along with you, to get 15 percent, and you can slow us all down.
Got to get to 16 percent.
So this is, this is tyranny of the minority. I think you've got too much power.
But the logic of how the state has arrived at these regulations, to me, just seems illogical.
It's based on the fact that if there are no speed limits at all, people have a spectrum of speeds, and those who poke shouldn't rule the day, and those who floor it shouldn't rule the day, and they have determined that reasonable people in reasonable situations travel at reasonable speeds, and the 85th percentile equates to a relatively safe speed.
What is reasonable today was not 20 years ago, and what's reasonable today will be considered too slow 20 years from now, is all I predict.
If the situation is safer, then it will be a good thing, in my opinion. Okay, any other comments?
Okay, the ordinance is entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, establishing the speed limit on the Mountain View Avenue between Prospect Avenue and Van Luven Street, and demanding Loma Linda Municipal Code Section 10.04.010 relating thereto. You may vote. And it passes.
Dr. Daley, you didn't vote.
Did someone not? Let me turn it off. You need to re-
One more time?
Vote again.
There we go.
Four votes, it passes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that'll be front page tomorrow. Okay, item number five, public hearing on ordering annexation to Landscape Maintenance District Number One, Public Works, you can describe this one.
Yes, this is the, to approve the Landscape Assessment District at the property, the southeast corner of Barton Road and California Street. Huh? No, northeast. This is the Arco AMPM and the property to just north of that, so, that's in my report.
Any questions first?
We have any estimate on what the cost impact of this is?
Yeah, the property owner maintained, the property owner maintained the landscape itself. So we just put the landscape assessment district in place, just in case he does not maintain it, then the city will jump in and maintain it, that's all.
Okay, this is time for another public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? No takers. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now we'll proceed to whatever Pam tells us.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the procedure, the property owner is presented with a ballot that I will open, and he will determine whether or not he is agreeable to this. And it is checked that, yes, he does approve of the proposed annual assessment for his property that is shown on his ballot, with the annual inflation adjustment that's applicable to the future assessments, and that would be the CPI.
So we have an agreement from the property owner, then the, if the council sees fit, after discussion, we can move Council Bill R-2011-26.
I will move Council Bill R-2011-26.
And I'll offer the second on that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's adopted. We'll move to the consent calendar.
Make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as a whole?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's adopted. Item number 12, it would be appropriate at this time to have the vice chair of the RDA call the redevelopment agency to order.
Okay, we'll call to order the redevelopment agency board. We have a long list of agenda items. First is the presentation of a proposed fiscal year 2011, 2012 budget.
Thank you, sir. We have Diana, our finance director, will present the PowerPoint presentation.
We have the PowerPoint presentation that we present annually to board, to council members. I did want to give some brief things of what we discussed. We did hold two workshops with the budget committee and city council, in which we discussed the full budget going forward, and the efforts that the city manager and working with employees to come to concessions in order to balance the budget. So I don't know if the city manager would like to discuss those, or would you like? Okay, so currently, this is our proposed budget, and I'm going to go quickly through this, it's our annual presentation, you hear it at mid-year, and it's just, so, I don't want to bore you guys. Our key operating fund is our general fund budget, then we have the whole city, which includes the general fund, then you have your enterprise funds, the water sewer, the LLC CP, and then a lot of capital improvement projects, which are development fees that we collect from developers, and also any grant funds that we have, and then we have our RDA. So basically, this presents the current budget, and then it presents the proposed budget, and I just want to go through, we're maintaining our rainy day fund, we're maintaining our equipment replacement fund set aside, and then we're just proposing an increase in overall fund balance by 150,000 or so. So we do have a balanced budget, we are presenting hopefully a 42,000 increase in fund balance for the next operating year. This kind of shows just the available fund balance, and kind of running the revenues and other sources and expenditures, and kind of showing what we will end up with. And you see that we end up with 3.1 in the available, not any of the reserves. And this just highlights changes in our top seven revenues, which are our sales tax, refu service, the motor vehicle in lieu fees, our overhead, property tax, franchise fees, and lease fees. So the major changes you'll see is overhead, because we are having reductions in other funds that we charge overhead to. There's not as many capital projects going on, that's the main reduction that you'll see there. The motor vehicle in lieu fees, because it's now tied to our assessed valuation, there is a proposed decrease in that. Sales tax, we've actually been doing pretty good, we're holding up with, actually above our projections for this year, and so we anticipate an increase in that. Property tax, again, due to assessed valuations, we are seeing a decrease, so we are proposing a decrease in our property tax revenue. But overall, our general fund, it's a decrease of 3%. And then here you'll see the major changes in our expenditures by categories of departments, so you'll see that we did some cuts overall. The major cut you'll see in our community development department, when the city manager touches on those items, you'll see that personnel will be the major cut in that, as well as our contract with Will Dan because of development, building activity, so that's a little bit reduction in there. And then I believe we finished the general plan, so there's less contractual fees in that as well. And, let's see, we did the police services, we are having a cut by half a deputy, so that's a reduction in our police services. In the general government, the bulk of that is our debt service on the lease for this facility, and we're coming to the end of, we have five more years on our debt service, and it tends to go down, so. And then you will see an increase in our fire department, that's due to major increases in personnel costs. We are seeing increases, the city manager will touch on some of that with the negotiations and stuff. And then there are pay increases that are, the merit increases that are annually, so that's, I believe, the bulk of that one. But overall, we are reducing our budget by 1% in operations for the general fund. And as you'll see, that leaves us with a change in projected fund balance of 42,300 for next proposed year. And then this is the city overall, as you'll see, we are projecting an increase in our fund balance for the city as a whole. One of the major changes in the city funds was we restructured, as you'll see, you voted previously to move bond proceeds from the RDA into a capital improvement fund, which is now categorized as part of the city funds. So we moved about 3.5 million of that, that will remain at the end of this year into that fund, so that's why the major change in this fund balance, you'll see that, because of that change, it's now out of the RDA into the general city. And here you'll see the changes in our revenues for some of the major funds, like, you'll see the enterprise fund, the sewer, the LLC CP, the water, and the capital projects, as you can see, development is down, so we aren't collecting as much development fees. The bulk of the fees this year were due to some redevelopment agency activity. And then you'll see reduction in other funds, and that's mainly due to grant reductions for, we finished up on major grants this operating year, and so you'll see a change in those as well. And this is expenditures, so, we are proposing some, you know, capital improvement projects, and that will be out of that, the funding that was moved from the RDA to the general city, so you'll see that in those capital funds, which Jarb will be spending now for those projects out of that fund instead of the RDA. And then for other funds, you'll see as well the reduction because of the lower grants funding and less spending for capital items in those areas. So overall, the city has a reduced budget of 5%. And you'll see the change in fund balance of 1.9%, and that's just spending money. This is our RDA, and here you'll note the difference from transferring those funds from this year and next year. We have a lower beginning fund balance, and then we have revenues slightly lower due to our tax increment, which is associated with our property values within the RDA, and then reduced expenditures for debt service and capital expenditures through the RDA. So here you'll see the difference, the major, the tax increment comes into our debt service fund and into our low mod, 20% goes into our low mod housing fund, so you'll see the difference in these two revenue sources. And then here's our proposed spending for the RDA, as you can see, it's reduced from the low mod housing, we finished some major projects for the low mod housing and the senior housing. And then in the debt service, you'll see a reduction due to some changes in the way, we also took action to reduce our debt to the city by transferring property to the city and in place, and reducing the loans from the city to the RDA. So now, property that was previously owned by the RDA, the city now owns, and in exchange, we reduced the debt that was owed to the city from the RDA. So that, in turn, reduces our debt service to the city for those city agency loans, so you'll see that in. So that's our RDA, and you'll see the reduction due to, we're spending, we're almost at the end of the bond proceeds, and then we're moving it now to this new fund, so you'll see the drop in spending there. And here you'll see just a slight change in overall proposed fund balance for the RDA. And this is some carryover due to not spending some of our low mod housing fund that Pam has for certain projects, she's not doing some of the rehab homes that she was planning, or new single-family homes that she was planning, so it was just carryover some of our fund balance for those items. And as usual, this is a very conservative budget, and we've really taken a look at our revenue sources and our expenditures, and we've just done what we can to balance the budget.
That concludes your report.
I would like to add a couple of things. This has been a very difficult budget year for me, since this is my third time I'm doing it. And I would like to thank you, the staff, for the city to, for working with me to come up with the concession, and I would like to tell you what it is. We, these past two years, the city staff have been taking 5% furloughs, which is equivalent to half an hour a day for the general employees. For the management, they take, they have to take two weeks off in furloughs. In addition, we have deduction in benefit of $50 per month out of the management, and for the general employee is, they lose three floating holidays. So for next fiscal year, we are giving back that furloughs, the 5% furloughs, and also giving back the $50 a month benefit. And the reason for that is, we now have less and less staff, we are shorthanded, and so I need the staff to come back to work and help me, help the public, really. In turn, the staff agree on paying 70% of employees per contribution, and that is a lot for employees, because with exception of the fire department, our employees pay 6.25% Social Security, and we also now pay additional 7%. For the fire department, the employees agree on paying the whole 9% of the employees per contribution. So that is a very nice of them for working with me to get this concession. For next fiscal year, we have a surplus of only $42,000. It's not a lot, but I'm so proud that we have at least a surplus, we're not touching the reserve. It's still going to be a tight budget year. I told my department head that even though we have approved budget, I'm still not going to approve every single item that was in the budget, just because I want to make sure that I have a balanced budget all the way through next fiscal year. So, and I would like to thank the budget committee for working with me. This year, what I did differently is we meet with them a lot more often than we did previous year. They probably get tired of me now, but I would like to continue to get the input from them, and also with the advice from the city council. Again, your advice was, Jarb, you had to balance the budget, and I'm presenting you with a balanced budget, so, thank you.
I want to compliment you, Jarb, and your whole team for the effort you've put in, and I want to be certain that the audience we have in the room, as well as the potential vast audience that may be watching on television, that this is- This is... Represents significant effort and sacrifice by a lot of people to balance our city budget. And the more I read and the more I hear from other council... From councilmen from other cities, Loma Linda's doing quite well, but it's with a great deal of work and pain. It's a team effort. And I appreciate your leadership in this. This is significant. Other questions or comments? Yes?
Before we go further with that, we do have a recommendation that we separate out one portion of the budget for action before you go forward with the remainder of the budget. As you recall, Councilman Duper has declared a conflict of interest as to item P, which is the Schedule A pertaining to contract with Sheriff's Department based upon his employment with that agency. So, he is required to step aside during that portion of the budget discussion and action. Once you take action on item P separately, then he can come back and participate in the remainder of the budget and the overall vote. So, I'd recommend that we go forward in that manner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any specific comments related to item P on our agenda? That would be Schedule A pertaining to contract with Sheriff's Department?
There's no report on that item?
Okay. It's part of the budget.
Then I move item P.
I'll second adoption of that schedule.
Okay. And without dissent, it's approved. Now, the remaining parts, do we take item by item through this? Or can we merge some?
You can discuss them in any way you see fit. But we do have...
Yes, yes.
I agree. Yeah, the presentations, obviously, you want to do before you take action.
Okay. Then let's move on to item B, which is a presentation from the budget committee with their recommendations.
City council. Instead of reading the report to you like we've done in the past, kind of keep it brief. I think most of the work that has been done, especially this year, we... The budget committee likes the way Jarb has conducted the meetings. More information, a little bit at a time rather than a fire hose type of a input. And so, we do appreciate that setup. And we do recognize that the challenges for this year, for this particular year, in which Loma Linda really had to dig a little bit deeper than it has in many, many years to try and get the balanced budget. We had some very lean years a few years back, but this year is one of those years in which the city seems like, again, everybody pulled together as a group. And we do appreciate that. And basically, it's under the leadership of Jarb by trying to pull that in, including the citizens advisory council, the budget committee to be part of that. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'll just take... Answer any questions that you might have. Or if not, then that would be the conclusion of the report.
Are there any questions? I want to state publicly what I've told you privately, and that is that I found the report from the budget committee visionary and insightful and a fairly easy read for a budget report. And I, again, I want to compliment you because I feel like we're getting good direction from the budget committee and it gives me confidence as a council member that we've got good support and good information upon which to base decisions. And I appreciate that very much.
The budget committee really appreciates that because we do have a little bit of... Not necessarily the most exciting stuff to go through, but we do our best.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item C, Council Bill R-2011-19. Do we have to accept the budget committee report first or give me a little guidance here?
Well, you can act on all the remaining items in one vote.
Oh.
Just make that clear that you're doing...
Okay. With the exception of item P, which we've already approved.
Well, item P would become part of the overall budget.
Yes, but it's not part of this motion.
Well...
It was a previous motion.
You already approved that item, but now it's part of the budget.
Are there comments on... Or questions on any of the items A through R, with the exception of P? Councilman Brower?
Just one comment. You know, you look at the efforts of what goes on in our community from the budget committee to our leadership with staff to the cooperative effort with employees and taking some sacrifices and just think, you know, why can't the state do this? If the state did this, our state would have a balanced budget. But it just seems impossible for common sense to prevail in Sacramento.
This sounds like a possible platform that you're arranging for a future run for states.
Absolutely not. But I just... I think we all share the frustrations and want to thank everyone involved in this process here of the willingness and the efforts that go into this. And it just... You can't help but contrast the two levels of government.
Well said.
Since Jarb doesn't have enough hats, maybe we could loan him to the state for a little... No, no.
He can't run for president, though. I think he's born out of the country.
Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to move the balance of the... Of item 12.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want to be sure you're all awake, so I'm trying a different tactic here. New business demands register?
We'll move that to our next meeting.
That's right. Okay, we discussed that earlier. And adopt a street program?
Thank you, sir. We have been requested by the businesses and the resident that would like to adopt a street program where the businesses and residents of this town help maintain our public street and sidewalk and right-of-way. And so... To volunteer. So, we would like to ask the council to adopt this... Adopt a street program. And staff will be work with the different groups. And in turn, we will prepare a sign that says this section of street are adopted by this group.
Many cities do that.
Yes.
I just made a trip from Southern California up into Washington State and back and you see signs all along different roads of who's adopted that particular section of the highway or street.
Yes.
So, is this a formal proposal, then, that we put to a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I request that you approve the adopt a street program.
Any comments? Or if not, then a motion to approve would be in order.
So, move.
I'll make the second.
Okay. Without objection, it's approved. Any reports from councilmen?
Just a question I've seen and others have seen. Any significance to the quotes "fresh and easy" signs being covered over?
I've had calls from some of the public about that and actually from Gina from the newspaper, too. And I have two calls into fresh and easy yesterday and today and I've not heard back from them if there's any significance or not. And I have an email in today as well. They're not necessarily the best about replying to those types of requests or haven't been in the past.
Yes, I can't help but comment. I think it is a continual source of frustration for all of us that we've seen that building there for two and a half years and multiple contacts of, I think, just all of us on council and staff and why that company chooses to not move forward with, I think, a location that would end up being one of their best business locations around. The lack of vision and the lack of willingness to move forward. It really does baffle me. I just cannot understand it.
I also have had numerous people from the city contact me or usually pull me aside and want to know when that place is going to open if they've been driving past it for so long. It's perplexing.
You think of the student population. You think of the number of trips along that boulevard. I can't think of a better location.
Any other comments from councilmen? If I could ask a question. I've noticed several signs that are being... Kind of handmade signs that are attached to posts in the center divider and other places. Do we have... Do we... What do we do about those things?
Well, we usually... Usually, the... Our court enforcement officer will be the one who remove it. Now, we cut down on the court enforcement down to one days a week. But what I can do is I will start getting a public works guy to start removing those.
Okay. Good. Because they look tacky.
And we never announce which day.
No.
Yeah.
It's eight hours a week, so...
So, don't think you can get away with it four days.
Okay. Any other comments? Reports from officers. Hearing none, then we are adjourned.
On the...
Or perhaps not.
We were having a joint meeting, obviously, and on the agency agenda. I don't know if we covered the public comment earlier for the agency?
Not for the agency. That... I think you can finish the agency agenda.
In the minutes.
We've done the call to order roll call.
Okay. So, we need to approve the minutes? Okay.
Item three as well.
I move the minutes of May 24.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there support?
I'll second.
Okay. Any objection? So approved.
Do we have item three?
Okay. We have CRA bill number R-2011-09 approving a purchase agreement for 25613 Prospect Avenue. I'm Adam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, this is one of seven units that the agency has an interest in, in the Roger Peter Porter University condominium project. They're on Prospect Street. And they... All of the units are two bedrooms and two and a half baths and all of them have long-term affordability covenant. This particular unit is being offered to the agency by the original owner and he has agreed on our price of 132,000, which is considered affordable. And so, the agency will then rehab if necessary and then resell to an income qualified buyer. So, he has agreed to the purchase price. We are just waiting documentation now and your approval to move forward with the transaction.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
I move CRA bill R-2011-09.
It's been moved. Is there support?
I'll support that and second it.
Without objection, it's approved. We've already covered reports, so now we move to adjournment.
And now, we'll call to order the annual meeting of the Loma Linda Public Financing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any oral reports from the public on any non-agenda items? The only agenda item being the minutes. Hearing none, we'll move to the minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We are adjourned. Thank you all.